To order the, um, fall pre-ta- the, the pre-town meeting for the fall town meeting on twenty November two thousand nineteen. If we get rise for the.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is for the advisory committee to collectively go over the, uh, warrant articles for this, uh, fall town meeting next week and give our recommendations to the town. Uh, the only discussions will be as for each article as it goes. Uh, this is being taped for Templeton TV. Um, so nobody else should be recording. If you are, please let me know. Uh, any questions before we get going? So the, the plan will be I'll read the articles except if it's really long, we'll, uh, I'll, um, ask to waive the reading of the entire article. I know there's one that's really long. Most of them are pretty quick. And then, uh, we'll have discussions if needed and then, um, we'll take a vote. Okay. Uh, and I did verify that the, the meeting is properly posted, uh, with, uh, the town meeting is in Constance, so this is the true copy. Everybody has a copy of the warrant?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, Article One, Payment of Late Bills, to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of late bills from prior fiscal years from the FY twenty budgets. I think that should probably say budget or of the following department, so. A little English there. Uh, Highway Department, um, two hundred and forty dollars or take any other action related there too. Um, nine tenths votes required. Any discussion on this?
Couple of questions if I can. Maybe I can get clarification from, from the administrator. On, on something like this here, if it's late into the, the month of June and it's not an emergency, is there any way to end up putting off expenditure to the, the following year? Is there a process that we can end up looking at?
So there's, there's two, uh, processes. The first is they must have the bills to us by July fifteenth of the year. If we receive it by July fifteenth, we can pay it.
Right.
The second bill is if the department knows that they've bought something on June twenty-sixth and they know they may not get their bill in time or it's a vendor that they just consistently have trouble with, they fill out an encumbrance sheet and then we carry money over for them. If one of those two things fail or both of them fail, and it's not uncommon unfortunately.
Well, I'm just trying to take and end up reducing the amount of warrants that we have for fall town meetings. Just looking for any options that we have.
I, I agree with you completely, but inevitably there's a vendor out there somewhere that just.
Another, another question I have is, is this is gonna come from the FY twenty budget for the Highway Department. I, I'm assuming it's, it's expense. Now, w- we've, we're coming up to the twenty first that we're gonna have to make some decisions on cuts. Is this one, is this one of the accounts that we have potentially targeted to reduce? And what the impact is? I mean, I just, I don't wanna take and end up taking additional monies out of their budget and we have to take.
Perhaps they would prove to be an incentive to them getting their bills in on time and getting their encumbrances in on time. So I have, it's always been my practice that that was your budget, you need to manage it. And if an extra bill comes in late, it still needs to come out of your budget.
Okay.
And, and I agree, we need to, any bills that we get, no matter when.
Yes.
The town has to pay. It's just, there's no, there's no question in my mind about, about that.
That's, that's the longer answer. The shorter answer is I believe as a result of the school budget last night, we will not have to be cutting the highway budget, but I don't wanna prejudge what would be discussed next week.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's it. I'll make a motion to, uh.
Well, anybody else have any discussion? Okay.
I make a motion to end up recommending a yes vote for, uh, Article One.
A second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Uh, anything else? Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Article Two, Mark Dialeride promo- promotion. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of thirty-seven dollars and ten cents to an account entitled Mark Dialeride to meet said appropriation by a transfer from the revenues received from the Transportation Network Community Fee Assessment or take any action there too. I believe this is just, um. This is to, to have that service available?
Uh, so if you call Lyft, Uber, anyone like that, they add ten cents to your bill, send it to the state, state sends it to us. We then have to appropriate it in order to spend it.
Okay.
To, uh, this is similar to last falls to Mr. Springs' earlier point. Uh, at the annual town meeting, it is my intent to have as part of the consent agenda an article that says to see if the town will vote to, uh, appropriate any funds received from the Transportation Network Community Fee Assessment to an account entitled Mark Dialeride Promotion. And if you do that every spring, you won't have, as part of the consent agenda, you won't have to see this in the fall.
I'm, I'm glad to, thank you. I, I like that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, 'cause I thought, you know, thirty-seven dollars, well.
Last year was twelve dollars and thirty cents or some insane amount.
It's a, it's a pain in the ass to us specifically.
Honestly, you spend almost that much money putting it on here, printing it and discussing it.
Uh, our opinion was you send it to us, it's the equivalent of a grant, we get to spend it. DLR's initial opinion was yes, you're right. Subsequently, they issued an informational guidance release. Uh, that no, you must formally appropriate it via a town meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend a yes vote for Article Two, Matt Dialeride Promotion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Moving along. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars and no cents for supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year twenty twenty operating budgets as follows. Town clerk, three thousand two hundred and fifty, fire and EMS, one thousand seven hundred and fifty. Uh, on the warrant, there are, uh, uh, notes and we'll go over those in a second. As to meet said appropriation by transfer said sum from certified free cash or to take any action related there too. Uh, the, the notes are basically, uh, for the town clerk, it's to backfill expenses incurred by the school district meetings and unexpected publishing attorney general's opinion on certain bylaw changes. And then, uh, for firing EMS is to backfill uninsured expenses for parent ambulance two that was damaged in a motor vehicle accident.
I, I do have some, some things on this one, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
The, uh, policy, if I'm, if I'm correct, is, uh, on using, uh, free cash for, uh, one time, uh, one time, uh, 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 expenses. That would, that would kinda go against that when this is using free cash. I don't like to use free cash per se. And, and the, the second part of that would be, uh, since both of these were unanticipated, unbudgeted, I mean, we didn't know. You can't budget for an accident. You can't budget for what we went through with the school. Wouldn't it be more sense to end up going through the emergency reserve or something like this? And I'd like to take and hear your thoughts on that.
Sure. Uh, well, first, uh, the, uh, financial management policy, uh, which every, uh, year goes through a review with the selectmen and I think last year we invited your comments as well and would do so again, uh, during this process, does allow for the backfilling of unanticipated, uh, expenses that occur after the budget. It does not allow for creating the budget at the beginning of the year. We can't in March or May say, well, we got a million dollar budget and we're gonna support it with a hundred thousand. The policy does allow, if you get into November, December, January and the spring, to backfill items. Uh, but happy to take your comments when we go through that review. Uh, the second is coming to you for reserve funds, does not allow me the, um, opportunity to remind the community of the expense of three district-wide meetings. Just a public service announcement, if you will.
But, we, we could use it, couldn't we, on?
And finally, we have a very different philosophy on the reserve fund. Uh, my belief, uh, is that the reserve fund, uh, is the only source of money outside of town meetings that we can use whatsoever. And I make every effort to defer as deep into the year as possible, particularly when I have a town meeting coming up. So as a, for instance, last fall town meeting or last, uh, spring, the annual town meeting, we've come to you about six weeks ahead of time for a transfer to backfill the accountant's position due to illnesses. And the board's response was, well, we got a town meeting coming up, why don't we deal with it there? Which, which we did. Um, so I wanted to, I always defer as much as possible. Uh, the other thing is that quite frankly, when we prepared the warrant, we had no clue if we needed to find seventy thousand dollars or three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And to ask for a transfer from the reserve fund without knowing where the budget was going to land, we did not think was good, uh, financial management either. Uh, so those are, those are our views as to why we landed, how we landed on this.
Anybody? I, I actually kinda concur with you in this case, since we do have a meeting next week and we can appropriate the free cash for it, that keeping the emergency fund for as long as we can, you know, for those periods of times when you can't appropriate it in another manner is kind of a prudent thing to do. So. Anybody else? I will entertain a motion. Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, advisory committee, uh, recommends, uh, yes on this Article Three.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will? Yes. And I'm a yes. I'm a yes. Okay, Article Four. Um, I'm not gonna read all this. Um, does anybody need the, this whole thing read? Uh, it is available online to people, so. Um, this is amending the bylaws, RE alcohol open container. See if the town will vote to amend one oh seven dash two, the general bylaws making certain additions in bold italic uh, or deletions and strike through to the existing bylaw to read as follows. Uh, item B under that paragraph originally read, a person who violates this section shall be punished by civil penalty of not more than three hundred dollars. The, uh, recommendation for this is to strike through the not more and make the penalty three hundred dollars. And I don't see any other changes. Um, there is a a definition, 'cause I know we went over this extensively last year, of what's considered open container and all that stuff, so. Uh, does anybody want to discuss this any further or want it read more?
I feel uncomfortable about all the amendments to the, the, the bylaws. And this is the, this is what I'm looking at. The codification did not go and it's not as smoothly as we have. There was six, uh, bylaws that were repealed. That's causing, uh, uh, a big stir within the community. I under, I understand that there's one, I looked at it and it, I, I have to agree repealing it. There's some others that I, I, I don't think should have been repealed. Uh, especially the one for, uh, bringing refuge and stuff like that into the community.
Okay, but let's just focus on this one specifically, please.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just talking about the, the fact that there's issues with the codification and I'm pointing out what, what some of the, what the, why, why I feel that way. Can I end up?
I, I will give you a little latitude, but.
Uh, what I see is Article twenty-eight, uh, uh, chapter twenty-eight, Articles, Article Two, uh, tw- twenty, uh, twenty-eight dash seven. The heading is there twice. Then I, I look at two Articles, twenty-eight dash seven and fifty-nine point six. Both of them say the same thing on, on both of those Articles. In addition to that, I looked at chapter nine, Article One. Uh, when you look at the, the document that we were supposed to take and end up, uh, voting on at, at town meeting, it ended up having, uh, that, that particular article had a, a four and a four A. Uh, four was totally omit, omitted. And I mean, I don't, and that's just.
Okay, so, so you believe, so I can paraphrase, you believe there's some issues with the bylaws? Okay.
No, I, no, with, with how it went over, there's some issues that I think should be corrected before we put additional warrant articles on and create potentially some other, so, some other issues, period. That's my feeling. I feel uncomfortable about, about putting stuff on when we have issues with the, the present one that we have on the books.
Okay, so I think that is a, I think that that is a much bigger issue not to be solved here and that our task at hand today is to review the bylaws that they recommend amending. And we just recommend to the town whether for this specific bylaw, being the alcohol open container, our recommendation, whether that bylaw should be changed or not.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, setting aside whatever anyone thinks of the bylaw codification process of three years and multiple town meetings and, uh, uh, open meetings and such and whether or not someone now finds something was repealed they would wish had not been. The bylaw of, of three hundred or so pages was submitted to the Office of the Attorney General for review. Um, they found three, uh, technical items that they had wanted addressed. Um, in simplest terms, the current bylaw says that the fine shall be not more than three hundred dollars. In another, in that section and throughout the bylaws, we've gone from criminal violations to, excuse me, apologies, everything being non-criminal violations. The condition for using non-criminal violation is you have a fixed fine. So if it said not less than a hundred nor more than three hundred, that's out. If it said not more than three hundred, that is out. So by removing the not more than, it converts to a fixed fee and that addresses the attorney general's concern. Uh, let me finally say that this was a three-year, multi-party, uh, three hundred-page codification. There are very few pieces of codification or statute that are perfect by the time they're done. They often require some technical amendments or there's an oops, we forgot to leave this in, or oops, we forgot to put that in. We can do that over the coming months. And by the way, the only way to fix them is with articles at the town meeting.
And I know, I don't wanna discount what you were saying, that if there are things that are, there's a problem and need to be addressed and that we absolutely should address them.
That's what I'm saying, is that if there's, there's some that we have to address, let's address them all at the same time and not do it piecemeal here per se. And I would like, I would like to take and end up seeing that. I mean, I, I see some issues there that have to be resolved. And let's take a look at those and make sure we know all of them and put them out altogether.
And, and, and I agree that maybe at spring, uh, at the, at the annual town meeting, we can do that. I'm not saying, I'm not gonna.
On December one, everyone will get a letter with a budget guidance memo that says, send us your budget, send us your policy changes, send us your bylaws.
So I think we'll have the opportunity.
Send us that list on January one and then that will become part of the budget and legislative package for fiscal twenty-one.
So, so the way, from what you said, the way I understand this, if we have not more than, it's really not even an enforceable fine.
It's not enforceable.
I agree with Carter. I read the attorney general's letter and it's not enforceable until this is changed.
Okay.
We need to do something about it.
The, um, only thing I just wanted to clarify for the folks that are watching is, um, and this was all part of our discussion through the process. Um, we had an option, I think, of going from the, like you said earlier, from one hundred to three hundred. Um, and we picked the three hundred. I just.
On, so I went, there were, uh, two with police, one with Board of Health. So I went to those departments and said, what do you wanna do? Board of Health said, hundred is fine. Chief said, I'd like three hundred, so I took the three hundred to the board of selectmen and they chose to support that number. Uh, if it is the belief of this committee that it should be the other side, then, I mean, I would suggest you feel free in saying it should be a hundred.
My only reason for asking is just so that people watching would know, 'cause I've been asked.
I went with what the department had, who's charged with enforcing the bylaw requested.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, let me make it clear, I'm not against the changing this. I'm just looking at it all at the same time.
No, I didn't take that. I, and unfortunately, we're at a point where we do have to address these individually because that's the way they're laid out to us in the article or in the warrant. Um, I, I agree with you, it'd be nice to have one clean, okay, here's the bylaws that need to be changed. Let's get this all cleaned up for once and for all, but we're not gonna be able to do that today.
Let me suggest to you that there, it, with three hundred pages and drafts, there is never a once and for all. I can guarantee you that I can write a hundred and fifty pages and have it proofread by half a dozen people and a error will be found at some point.
Well, but if you're paying, if you're paying somebody.
I'm looking at the pre-proof reader.
I, I think if you're paying someone to do this.
Agreed, agreed. Mr. May rarely lays, Mr. May rarely lets me down. I would have to agree with Mr. Spring on that.
Yeah, I, I would've thought he would've caught some of this. I'm surprised.
I, I mean, truthfully, if you're paying someone to do this. I would expect the errors to be minimal regardless of the number of pages.
Out of the three hundred pages that two sets of law firms looked at, that was it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm just concerned that there's a lot more other stuff that we have on there that we need to correct.
And, and I've seen some stuff.
And I wanna take and see us, I wanna see us go through that.
I will look forward to that list from you, Mr. Spring, so I can commence work on that sooner rather than later.
It's not my job to take and end up telling management what to do. I'm telling them that they need to take and go through.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'll make a motion to, uh, um, accept Article Four as written.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
The reason I feel uncomfortable about that, I, I have to vote no.
Okay, and I vote yes. All right, Article Five. Um, it's to see if the town will amend, uh, Chapter One or, or Section one ninety-six, general bylaws, to make certain additions in bold italic. This is, um, the same thing we just discussed, but it has to do with marijuana open container. And again, uh, Item B, uh, crosses out not more than and makes it a, a civil penalty of three hundred dollars. Discussion? Motion?
I make a motion to accept Article Five as written.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Uh, Amy?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
No.
And I'm a yes. Article Six, um, this is for non-criminal disposition of violations to see if the town will uh, vote to amend one dash seven of general bylaws to make certain additions in bold italic or deletions and strike through to existing bylaw to read as follows. Uh, this is for, uh, Schedule of Civil Assessments, Board of Health, D Wells, Chapter two seventy-two. Fine allowed one hundred dollars for each offense. Every day past thirty-day notice of violation shall be a separate violation. Enforcing agent shall be the Board of Health. Um, Section G is the Police Department, open container for alcohol. Fine allowed three hundred for each offense. Enforcing agency will be the Police Department or designee. And Item fourteen is open container of marijuana. Fine allowed three hundred for each offense. Enforcing agent, Police Department or designee. Or take any action there to, related there too.
Do you have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Uh, u- under the Wells D, is that an addition? Because I, I looked at the, the, the codification document and I didn't see that. Is this an addition or?
Uh, it, it already exists at not less than a hundred nor more than three hundred.
I didn't see D on.
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look as to why the A D.
Here. Oops, I'm sorry. No, but if you look, it's additions, making certain additions in bold italic, so yes, that would be an addition, 'cause it's in bold italic.
There's no D on there. It's.
Right, right, so what they're saying is they're adding that. They're adding D.
It's out in the main bylaw without a, um, a fine amount, so now it has to be brought into the omnibus listing of the.
I think what they're trying to do is make what we just changed or, or the recommendation to be changed in the previous two articles to match.
Yeah, I think it, it just shows up in a different place.
Wait a minute for Mr. May to come back.
And Council will be present to speak to it next Thursday night as well.
But that, that's how I read it. We'll just wait a second for Mr. May to come back. All right, any discussions on this?
Again, I, I feel uncomfortable about this, but.
I understand. No, you're certainly entitled to your opinion.
Yep.
Uh, I'll take a, anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Article Six as written.
A second?
I'll second.
Debbie, second? Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
No.
And I'm a yes. Article Seven, amending the bylaws, RE Presentation of Budget. Uh, to see if the town will vote, uh, to amend twenty-eight dash seven of its general bylaws by making certain additions in bold italic, deletions and strike through to the existing bylaw to read. It's eight twenty-seven preparation by Administrator and Board, amended, okay, that's not important. Uh, it shall be the duty of the town administrator in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen to consider expenditures and develop a budget for the ensuing fiscal year of this, of the several boards, officers, officers, right, and committees of the town as prepared by them in such a form and detail prescribed by the town administrator. And this is an addition and further present and defend the same throughout the process to the town meeting for action. And it requires a majority vote.
Is, uh, fifty-nine dash six going to have the same wording as this? Like I said earlier, the, the, that same paragraph, all except the last italicized part, part is in twenty, twenty-eight, seven and, and fifty-nine, six.
I don't have a copy of the codified bylaws in front of me, so I'm afraid I'm not aware of the reference. Uh, I will say that we provided this body with prior legal opinion, uh, that this change is actually not needed. However, Mr. Benefit Bennett felt strongly that it should be added in order to clarify it and I would defer, uh, any questions to Jeff, if you don't mind, Jeff.
If he wants to make a comment.
Yeah.
I'm just looking to see if I have.
Well, he's looking. Does anybody else have any discussion on this?
I'll, I'll throw in my hat. Um, I'll just say that, uh, in the last three years, I know there's been some, uh, you know, it's been longer than that, but in the last three, there's been some, uh, confusion, back and forth. There's been, uh, discussion on who and we have two bylaws that seemingly conflict. And this is, to my knowledge, uh, and from what's been explained at the meetings, it's just a. I'll throw in my hat, I'll just say that in the last three years, I know there's been some, you know, it's been longer than that, but in the last three, there's been some confusion, back and forth, there's been discussion on who, and we have two bylaws that seemingly conflict, and this is, to my knowledge, and from what's been explained at the meetings, it's just a, an attempt to clarify who, you know, produces and presents and defends the budget.
Do you feel it's trying to resolve the conflict?
That's, you know, what I think the goal is here.
Okay.
You know, there might be more work to do, but I think this is a good start.
Jeff, did you want to make a comment or?
I just gave them a copy of the original twenty-eight seven, so they checked out.
So this is twenty-eight seven from the codification, it is exactly the same as this, except for the language being added in the bold italic.
Right, no, we understood that.
We understood it.
It's fifty-nine, fifty-nine seven.
There is no conflict with fifty-nine seven if-
Fifty-nine six, I'm sorry.
Are you referring to the duties of the finance committee, of the advisory committee?
No, this is, this is, this is dealing with the town administrator. Fifty-nine six is dealing with the administrator, and this is, this is the same wording, and I'm just trying to get clarification if you're gonna put-
Is it online?
Don't have it up.
It is online.
It is online.
In the bylaws?
Yeah.
Yeah, down at the bottom of the homepage, Deb, you'll be able to go to the bylaws.
Powers and duties, town administrator, got it right here, Carter.
Can I borrow it from you, Bob, please? So fifty-nine six sets forth the powers and duties of the town administrator, acting by and for the board in any manner which the board may assign to the administrator relating to the administrative affairs, the duty the administrator could consider expenditures and develop a budget. I'm not sure I see the conflict, I will consult with town council, it is in two different sections, and frankly, there's no conflict with either, but be happy to talk with town council.
Well, I'm talking about redundancies, we, hopefully, we were, through codification, we're supposed to get rid of redundancies.
Happy to talk with town council, this is where Jeff and I discuss putting it.
So I think what your issue is with Item B, which is basically what twenty-eight seven says, and I think, are you wanting them to potentially add that last?
No, I'm saying it, part of the codification was to take and get rid of redundancies. We have redundancies, are we gonna add this to that?
Is that gonna be added to the fifty-nine point six also?
We shouldn't have redundancies if we codified it.
Well, you can see it, it's-
Yeah, you're right, but, I mean, if we paid people to do it, there shouldn't be redundancies, but-
Obamacare had one thousand one hundred and eighty-four pages with three hundred and eighty-four technical amendments required afterwards, I'm afraid that-
No, I understand, I, I'm not gonna get in there, okay.
I mean, truthfully, I'm frankly comfortable with the language that's there, and we provided you with the legal opinion.
Alright, so-
We can do it any way you're comfortable.
Well, whatever the board, so, so basically, this has been presented by the Board of Selectmen to add the last sentence, or to add on to the last sentence, basically saying that they need to defend their budget through the process, that's really what it's saying.
Well, and also, what it does is it, it takes the, the mass general law, which states that if the advisory committee doesn't present the budget and there's a bylaw for the selectmen to do it, this, this basically ends up getting out of our, our, our ability to take and end up doing, presenting that budget and make it off for the selectmen, that's really what this does.
Okay.
In accordance with that, with that bylaw, that's what it really does.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
Clear set up.
I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Seven as written.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, no more discussion, Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will? No.
And I'm yes.
I will forward a mail to town council in the morning on this duplication, copy to this body as, for his advice.
On whether it should-
Proceed with further clarification if any he believed he needs to.
Okay, Article Eight is amending the bylaws, overlay districts for cannabis, this is being presented by the planning board, there's Exhibit A and B and the maps in the back, you wanna take a look at those? This is really long article, so we're not gonna read through it, but to see if the town will vote to amend its voting bylaws by inserting Article Two definitions, Section three hundred dash seven, the following appropriate in alphabetical order, so it's just kind of defining cannabis commission, craft marijuana cooperative, and I think it's all those different entities that deal with the cannabis industry as set forth by the Cannabis Control Commission. I think it's, the purpose of this is basically to allow for cannabis business to be in town and to make sure that the zoning accounts for that, if I'm-
Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct, the challenge we had moving forward, as you know, the zoning in town was adopted, we were one of the last towns to adopt zoning regulations in place, but with this new industry coming, with cultivation, the cannabis coming to Templeton and obviously being legal here in Massachusetts, we had to really look at our map, our zoning map, and because we received active interest and we signed two HCAs already, one of which calls for cultivation and falls within the highway business, that cultivation, that HCA is dependent on this passing, so one of those is dependent, the retail one is fine, so it's important to keep that in mind as we move forward. Now, overlay District A, as you see on page twenty-seven, overlay District A is all the zoning of highway business and overly, so if you look at your map, you'll see all those yellow parcels.
Well, our map is in black and white.
Oh, yours is in black and white?
Yeah.
Mine's in blue.
Is that the blue ones? Alright, okay.
Let me, that's the page.
Okay, that's my, that's my page seventeen.
Yeah. Carter's got his map, he's gonna share with you, but as you can see, right here, there's some more over here.
Okay, thanks.
And all the yellow in the zoning, it opens up to, because right now, we're kind of stuck only in the industrial zones, which is just a few parcels in town, so what this essentially does is it opens it up to those areas. Okay, and obviously, everybody's familiar with the overlay District B, which is the old Baldoville Elementary School, and we have received interest in that parcel land, this will actually make that school essentially marketable more so, passing this, because now we will actually have a vacant facility eligible, which has already received interest from cannabis cultivation industries.
So, so if I may, I'm just gonna add that the planning board in there thing basically cite the three different purposes for A, B, and C, and that's, A is to provide marijuana establishments and medical marijuana treatment centers in suitable locations under strict conditions, glad to see that, to regulate the sitting design, the sitting, design, placement, operation, safety, monitoring, modification, and removal of any marijuana establishment and medical marijuana treatment center that may be located within the overlay districts, and the third one is to minimize the adverse impacts of the marijuana establishments, medical marijuana treatment centers on the town and nearby properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, and other places where minors congregate, local historic districts and other uses, other land uses incompatible with said establishments. And then it goes into the applicatilities, and then, and then it talks about sitting and, and all the different things.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman, in these overlay districts, it's actually be, gonna be relatively restrictive in the sense where they're gonna have to get special permit, so in these zones that you see on these maps, they will have to go in front of the planning board for a special permit, they're allowable uses, but with a special permit, the industrial is allowed by right. But there's only a few parcels, so this actually opens up the town of Templeton to the cannabis industry, this is something that you're gonna see, Templeton voted in favor of it, of the question when it came up back in two thousand sixteen, it's very simple.
Just fixing the zone.
It's fixing the zoning, making it essentially, A, cannabis industry, we're here, we're Templeton and we're open business, that's it.
My only question, I see A and C, that's, I don't have any problems with C.
Thank you.
With B, it restricts that to, is, are we gonna be restricted because we have done this as an overlay for marijuana, if we, if somebody comes along and wants to purchase that particular building for something other than that?
Well, Mr. Spring, if you look precisely to it, the problem was not so much the retail, not so much the other, it's the cultivation that we had the challenge with.
The answer's no.
And the answer's no.
It will, it won't-
It expands permitted uses, does not restrict.
So it can be used for something else other than, on that, if we're, if we're lucky enough to sell it for something other than that-
Whatever it can be used for today, it can be used for tomorrow, except that it can also be used for this use with a special permit.
Okay, and, and, and as being on the committee that put the proposal together, we knew that this was gonna have to happen, that we were gonna have to add this to the zoning.
And that was a challenge.
And, right.
And, and-
And we knew that going forward.
Mr. DeJoy was well aware of it, he sat on the Baldoville Elementary School Disposition Committee, we're fortunate where we have interest in town and we're constantly receiving active interest here in Templeton, so we could either move forward in a way where it expands economic development here in Templeton, or we could just keep it restrictive, and this opens it up, but with a special permit.
I just don't want us to not be able to use it for something else.
Yeah, it doesn't limit it to that, I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yep.
Anything else? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for Article Eight, to recommend a yes vote.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second, no more discussion, Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, Article Nine, capital budget and special articles sewer fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand dollars and no cents for various capital activities and special articles as generally described below, so it's kind of a general statement, Department sewer pickup truck forty-five thousand dollars, and to meet said appropriation by transfer of said sum from retained earnings of the sewer enterprise fund, or take any action there, related there to. Question I would have is, did this just sort of pop up, or why was this not at, at the annual town meeting or what?
We encourage all departments to try to submit at the annual town meeting planning cycle of the capital, there are some items that fall out of that cycle, in this instance, I think that they simply forgot to submit it, it has gone to capital at this point in time, and we are hopeful that, I don't think that, have they gone in this year yet?
They're coming next meeting.
And we're hopeful that we can get them on a more annual cycle, as with all the other departments, that said, as we will talk about in a moment, there are some things that pop up off-cycle, we just can't deal with it.
No, I agree, I mean, and I think the off-cycle things are the, the reason for the fall town meeting is, but expenditures of a pickup truck, I think is-
Ideally, this would have been on the annual cycle.
And if I could also say, the capital planning committee also recommended positively for all the items in front of you, we reviewed them at our meeting, Mr. May was involved as well as myself, thank you.
Okay.
Let me just say this, it's been a challenge to take and end up getting all departments and all people that have capital expenditures over the years, to take and end up coming before the capital planning, we have made some progress, it was known way back when, when we set up the capital plan back in thirteen, fourteen, we, we had some difficulties, and I, I know that, that our selectmen, Mr. Morris, because I was on also, we struggled to take and end up getting, because the school wasn't even on, I mean, that's a, that's a major expense, we, we ended up having struggled to get the school to even come forward, to put that, so that we could end up going through that process.
Well, Mr. Spring, and if I could also continue on by saying, Mr. May and I, on the capital planning committee, certainly go out of our way to make sure the department heads, as he pointed out, sewer will be showing up, even though we reviewed all their items before, they're gonna become, the sewer will be coming back and explaining the other capital items that they're gonna be coming in with, so.
I just, what I'm saying is, I know it's, it's been a struggle in the past, and we've made some progress.
Yeah.
I would just ask that, you know, that we continue to work with all the departments to ensure stuff like this falls under the appropriate things at the appropriate time, I think, really buying, buying a pickup truck, and I, and this is no commentary on their need for it, it, there's, that's what the annual town meeting's for.
We agree.
I'll make a motion to make a recommendation for Article Nine.
Second.
That's a yes recommendation?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
That's what I was seconding.
Okay, no further discussion, Bob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Article Ten, capital budget and special articles to general fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and no cents for various capital activities and special articles generally described below, DPW, Highway Department, Main Street Bridge, two hundred thousand dollars, DPW, B and G, what's B and G stand? Buildings and grounds, I'm sorry, BES closure maintenance, so this is basically gonna be, we'll, we'll discuss each one, and then treasure collector tax title work fifteen thousand, so I understand that this is, is this for repairs of the Main Street Bridge, or is it to assess it?
We hope get to seventy-five percent design and environmental permitting by August of next year, such that we can submit an application for a mass work grant, that's our next cycle.
Alright, so we have to spend the money to-
We, we always end up spending upfront design as we have done on Royalston Road.
Okay, I know Baldoville Elementary, we were hoping that by this time that we would-
We had hoped this would be an article to sell it.
Yeah, this would be the article to sell it, but it's not, so we do have to probably keep low levels of heat, there's a small amount of maintenance, it's gonna have to, you just can't let the, close the building off, that's bad news, so.
I have to carry the insurance on it now instead of the school reimbursing us for the insurance, some things like that.
For the, for the bridge, could that be also Chapter ninety monies being used for that?
We could use Chapter ninety's, ninety monies for the design, but then that would be two hundred thousand dollars worth of roadwork I wouldn't be able to do for people, and these roads are so bad.
Yeah.
I just can't in good faith-
I don't disagree, I'm just- If we have to-
I know.
I'm looking at maybe supplementing this with a small amount if we, if we need to with, with Chapter ninety money.
If I could also add, Mr. Spring, I've already went down there with Senator Gobie's aide, and they're aware of it, they know the, that there's a paper company right there, it's a very vital bridge, and that's something that our office is taking seriously, Carter and I have already sat down, we've reached out to the senator, we've reached out to legislative delegation, and we're gonna continue to keep working to make sure we get as much funding as we can necessary to take care of these projects.
I think you need to rule out Chapter ninety, this is a two and a quarter million dollar project.
Yeah, I agree, because you're right.
And we take five plus or minus years.
Spend a Chapter ninety on-
So, at, at this immediate point in time, we think in terms of three funding sources, funding source number one is August of twenty, when we would apply for a mass works, funding source number two is, it is an FHWA bridge, eligible bridge, which means we would try to put it on the tip, which would mean twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. Option number three is there's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of debt coming off the books in twenty twenty-three, if we can, and Mr. Bennett and I have talked about this, possibly a stabilization fund, trying to get that voted as an override where it goes into a stabilization fund, and then we could tackle this with some debt, so I, I just have to, from my own perspective, say to you, I rule out Chapter ninety, because I have one point one million dollars a year we should be spending, we're spending four hundred and thirty thousand.
So I think the main takeaway here is this is to get us to the point where we can start applying for other funds.
Where we can get a better handle on- Where we can get a better handle on the, and begin to be more serious with grant sources, yes.
And then.
Do we know if there's, if there's an impact of, because of the degradation of that bridge? I know, I've gone over that quite a few times, to the point where we have to have an engineer come in and tell us that we can't use it, I, I don't want to take, I don't want to see us.
We have an engineer who came in and told us not to use it, and that's why it's now one lane. Our choice was to have it as no lane, or the one lane, this is.
Yeah, I don't want to see us close that.
These are inspected by the Mass Department of Transportation.
All right, well, okay, so, um, and then the treasurer collector tax title work of fifteen thousand dollars. I think Mr. Terenzini and Adam, Mr. Lamontain have talked about this in the past, and what this for is, is to do the tax title work for properties that the town has seized, and to get them into the town, so we could dispose of them, or sell them.
Yeah, if you, when you walk out tonight, take a look on the right-hand side on the bulletin board, you'll see that big ad from the Gardener News, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Every one of those parcels that doesn't get paid off has to be recorded at the registry. Indeed, seventy-five dollars today, one-hundred-and-five dollars per parcel, January one. So we're doing a good job in terms of now annually, at least getting them leaned, and we're doing a better job at starting to get some of them into land court. However, at the ten-thousand dollars a year we're budgeting, plus what we can get off the recap, we're just not getting anywhere. So, this was my hope to maybe get another fifteen parcels or so tackled this year with these extra free cash dollars.
I'm, I'm glad to see us being proactive, because in past years, as you probably are well aware of, we had a large amount of property that we had to take and end up going to an outside firm, that they can end up doing this, because it was such a, such a large volume, that it was gonna be very costly to the community, and it did bring us some, some monies in, and they, they ended up handling it on there, and I like that.
Thanks. Okay. Any other discussion? Article ten, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Article ten as written.
You have a second?
Second.
No more discussion, Bob?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
I don't like to use free cash, but yes.
And I'm a yes.
May I just ask a question?
You may.
When Bob says "accept as written," is he meaning recommending?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
So, I.
No, I just, I just want to understand, because.
He was getting nervous.
I'll be finishing this over the weekend, so.
It's the wording.
I, I, for everything, and if this is okay, that you've recommended a yes vote on Article.
Yep. Thank you for correcting my verbiage.
It's very rare that I get to prove any of Mr. May's comments or writings.
Well, you can prove my speaking all the time.
I always try to find eloquent words.
I'm not going there. All right, Article eleven. Take control of our meeting here. Article eleven, see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred dollars for various activities and specified below. This is coming from the Compu-, Community Preservation Act appropriations. Item one is selectmen, thirty-five thousand dollars for Stone Bridge. Item two, selectmen, fifty thousand for Scout Hall. There is notes that we will cover with these. Number three is near Gansett Historical Society, forty-three thousand-four-hundred, Grange Hall. Four and five are both for the North County Land Trust, one is for twenty-six thousand-five-hundred, the other thirty-five thousand-nine-hundred, Dwelly Farm, and Open Space and Recreation. So, um, so I believe, uh, item one is kind of what, similar to what we just discussed on the Main Street Bridge. Anybody have questions on number one?
Has, has the CPA submitted on this, and they?
Well, these are all their articles, and they've been.
Because it does say, it says, submitted by the, by the selectman, I didn't.
On their behalf.
It doesn't say that on mine.
No, it doesn't, we don't, yeah, it just says submitted by the Board of Select.
The CPC has a pretty rigorous process by which they determine which items make this list or not.
Well, they have, they have monies, and they will designate whether it, it fits their, their criteria.
Right, I understand that, but, all I'm saying is, it just says selectmen, because that's who, in the end, that's who will pay the, get the money from the CPC to then expend it wherever. I just know, because I'm involved with the Historical Society.
Monies comes, monies are on your tax, as part of, CPA, you, you pay as far as your real estate.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying it says selectmen here, just because that's who will get the check from the CPC to pay for the Stone Bridge.
It comes out of CPC fund.
Yes, that's what she's saying.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
That's what she's saying.
Okay.
Okay, um.
The agent to expect.
Yes.
Item number two is continued rehabilitation of Scout Hall, a town-owned historic building in East Templeton. Is that in fact, is it designated a historic building?
I think so, yeah.
I don't believe.
I'm not, I mean, the Historical Society has nothing to do with that, that's under the control of.
So let me just make everybody understand, in order to be a historic building for the purposes of the CPA, it does not have to be on the National Register of Historic. However, the Historic Commission needs to make a finding that it's important to the historical, and I, I forget exactly all the words.
Historical significance.
But it has to have significance to the community and to the neighborhood.
Right, and no question that Scout Hall fits that bill, not at all.
And that's how, that's how we got CPA money, for this building here.
Okay.
Is it was, we had to go through the historical, that they can end up having it deemed historical significant in order to get CPA money.
Okay, so number three is continued rehabilitation and preparation of design documents for Grange Hall, same historic building contingent upon the demonstration of public benefit by continued free admission to public events at said Grange Hall for Templeton residents. And then the creation of open space at Dwelly Farm on Berry Road, Templeton by clearing lands for field creation, contingent upon the demonstration of public benefit, free administration, events held at Dwelly Farm. Am I saying that right, Dwelly? For Templeton residents as continued monitoring existing conservation restrictions on the property. And, uh, number five basically says the same thing, I think it must be two different parcels, or, oh, I'm sorry, one's for passive recreation.
Right.
Any questions on these? All right. Take a motion, one way or another?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, what do I, vote favorably?
Yes.
Recommend favorable action. Recommend a yes vote.
A yes vote.
Yeah. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Bob?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, Article twelve, deposits to the general stabilization and OPEB accounts, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars and no cents to make deposits into the OpEx operations, capital, capital and stabilization accounts, and the OPEB reserve account as follows. OpEx, one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred, CapEx, thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred, OPEB, twenty thousand. And to meet said appropriation by transfer of the sum from free cash, that's submitted by the Board of Selectmen. I guess, my comment on this is, I, I've seen the list of potential free cash expenditures. I would like to see these rate, the percentages taken off the top of the free cash before anything else is expended. So, um, meaning, don't say I'm gonna use free cash for, if I have one, one and a half million dollars, I'm gonna use free cash for this, 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 this is what's left over, so now I'm gonna take my stabilization funds. I'd like to see it come off that top number. That's personal, um, I understand why you do it that way, sometimes you have to do it the other way. We're doing a fairly decent job each year of continuing to build those funds up, which is certainly needed in the town, so I'm not really complaining, but, it's a way to build it up faster, and.
We do it that way to try to ensure that we have monies for snow and ice and for a capital program. We can certainly look at doing it the other way, but the percentages would probably drop precipitously.
Well, I'd like to see the same percentages applied, meaning, meaning if it's thirty percent, I want to see it come off the higher number, and then that's, the rest is what's up.
As long as you understand your capital program will drop precipitously.
Yes, yes, and, and I'm not saying that, I'm absolutely, I think it's just something, we should, at some point, look at.
Out of curiosity and illustration, I think I will try, I'll run your thought through the spreadsheet and just see what it would look like, just out of curiosity.
You can just send that to me.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I will. Um, if I might.
Because I understand that there, there are things, we have to do it that way, because there's things we need.
Right.
And this is a way to get those things we need.
At this point, um, we only have, we have the monies for the lease.
Right.
And we have free cash. Just for the Board's edification, if I might, and I'm gonna put this in the voter's guide, because I will get the questions, so I'll answer them ahead of time. If these deposits are made as proposed, your operating stabilization will be seven-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. Getting close to where we want to be, but we've already talked with the Board about, at the time, that appeared really optimistic, and we should probably move the goals up a little bit. You'll be up to one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand in your capital account. You'll have one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand in your OPEB reserve, and we will still have a little bit over one million dollars available for the, for working capital, the capital program in the spring, snow and ice, and some other things. So it is moving nicely, and we just hope that the economy continues to cooperate long enough for us to get to where we need to be.
Surprisingly, I have to agree with that, Chairman. I'd like to see more money, I'd like to see more money in, in stabilization, because the time is coming. I don't know when, the economy is, i- i- is, is not necessarily gonna take a last, last forever. It happened in two thousand eight, in prior years, and we didn't have the money to take and end up taking in, and getting that, keeping our tax rate stable, and it caused us a lot of problems, because there was no money in stabilization. And that's really the big thing, and a lot of communities have multiple thousands, millions of dollars, excuse me, multiple millions. And when, early on, when, when I was on, on the advisory, long before some of these people, we had recommended a minimum of a million to a million and a half as a starting point, and going from there on up. I mean, I, I understand, we've made a lot of progress, but I'd like to see us in, in, much, much more, much more money.
As long as you understand it, we'll cut the capital program.
I think if you look at where we were just even three to four years ago, to where we are now, we're in a much better position. And, and that, I think that we're, we're going in the right direction. You're right, nobody knows what the economy's gonna do, if they, if they did, everybody would get rich. Economies are cyclical, um, and, and I think you make a really good point, in the fact that we need to be prepared that there will be a downturn at some point, just hopefully it's not as bad as it was the last time.
Yeah, and we, we've stopped using at least stabilization and free cash that they can do the budget, which is a, is a big plus.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on this also, because I, I, you know, this was a, um, like, uh, an eye-opener for me when I first got on, uh, the advisory committee. Because I remember this issue here, when I first got on the stabilization account, we were trying to figure out whether or not it had ninety-five thousand dollars in it, or sixty-four, I think.
It had ninety-five.
Yeah, it was, it was a question.
And they were gonna, they, they wanted to take eighty-five out, and we would've been like, ten thousand dollars in stabilization, which was dangerous.
And if I remember correctly, we didn't have a capital stabilization fund.
That's right.
And the OPEB fund, uh, there was some money somewhere under OPEB, but I think it was, you know, sixty thousand dollars just sitting aside.
It was voted, but we, nobody knew where it was.
So, you know, like Carter said, I know when this, this was put together, we were kind of like, you know, ha-ha, you know, good luck, you know, putting away any money at the end of the year, because, you know, we didn't have any money now, so. But it's really nice to see that we've been able to stick to it year after year, and, you know, like Carter was saying, we got seven-hundred-thousand in one, one-hundred-and-seventy in the other, um, and the OPEB's, you know, up in that area. I'm pleased, I would like it to be twice, three times what it is, absolutely. But, you know, we're six times, seven times better than where we were three years ago.
Right. I agree.
You know, I, I'm feeling pretty good today. So, with that, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to recommend Article twelve as written.
So it's a yes, recommend that.
Recommend the yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's the last one, I won't get it by here.
Bob?
Yes.
Don't worry, I'll fix it.
Hey?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
I'd like to see more, but yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so with that, that is all the articles. What we'll do is, I've asked Deb to, I have it here, but also ask Deb to put our recommendations together. She's gonna send it out to everybody, if, if, if it's legal, if you would just send me, just send it to me, so we don't violate any laws, uh, yes, you agree with, um, our recommendations, you know, so if you voted no, make sure your no vote is accounted for, I think we have it pretty, uh, well, and then I will, hopefully, if you could get it back to me by tomorrow, I will, um, send it to Carter tomorrow, so we can get it into the voter's guide for next week. So two, two small things of business.
Do we have to close the pre-town meeting officially first?
This is related to the pre-town, I, I think. No, I think we'll, we'll, at this time, we'll close the pre-town meeting, we've made our recommendations, and we'll send those. So at this time, the pre-town meeting's closed.
You have to watch what you have, who you're gonna talk about, because.
No, I'm just gonna talk about our next meetings.
Okay, because there's no agenda items.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We don't need a motion to adjourn the pre-town meeting or anything.
Uh, you, do, you have a motion to?
Sure, I'll make a motion to close the.
Do you have a second?
If, if you do that, you're closing the meeting.
The whole meeting?
Yeah, because it's listed as a pre-town.
Yeah, you gotta, oh, okay.
Okay, okay.
So we'll hold up, we'll hold off on that.
Okay.
So just real quick, um, everybody mind, the fall town meeting is November twentieth, at the middle school auditorium, six PM. Where we'll go over these again, uh, and then our next meeting, right now, is scheduled for the twenty-first. It is a joint boards meeting, I believe that's how we have it listed, it'll be right here. I did receive an email from the TA to make sure, if we wanted to have a separate meeting, that we can, we'll have to go into another room, or, I just wanted, did everybody want to do the joint meeting? I, I think at this point, that'll be.
That's fine.
So, okay.
May I comment on that?
You may.
So, just so you understand, we have given you a breakdown of how much has to be cut. We gave you two options, because until last night, we didn't know which way it might be going. So Adam will make that presentation, I will have vodka in his honor from Toronto as he's making it. And then, it's just, it's information on its discussion that night. So if there's ideas that you have that aren't on that list, and you need them, would like to see us monetize them, we need them ASAP, uh, the public has been invited, the boards can discuss, there will be no votes taken that evening. Whatever comes out of that meeting, and it's just a simple Excel spreadsheet, you need to cut seventy-one, whatever it is, and as the Board wants to see different scenarios, just plug it in, and when it's at zero, it's.
Is that the final number, the seventy-one that you just said?
Well, I'm awaiting the formal assessment from the schools, but we believe.
Yeah, because we haven't got it either, because.
No, we have not. I mean, they just voted last night.
So, um, and then the select board will vote on the twenty-sixth of November.
Can I ask that that be resent out to us again? I, I've got it somewhere, but I, it'll, it'll help if I receive, receive it again.
Sure, I'll do my best to get it out tomorrow morning, it may be Monday morning before I can get it out to you.
That, that's fine, I just love.
Sure.
What do you need?
It's also online, the, the, recommended cuts. It, it's also online, Will, you can.
Is it?
I think that's gonna.
From the front page of the, from the front homepage.
Okay.
There's the announcement, and there should be a link in that agenda and that announcement to take you to it.
Are you gonna send it to him, Deb, the gap, zap, closing plan?
Did that, did that work?
Deb got it.
Yeah, she's got it, she'll send it.
Excuse me, if I might, I have one question related to the, the number. Excuse me, if I might, I have one question related to the, the number, the thing you threw out a minute ago about the meeting next week. Um, the seventy-one thousand dollar number you throw, um, is that based off of that six-million-six-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollar number that we voted on on July?
It, it is our, um.
Kind of up in front of me, but.
I don't have the number in front of me, but we believe our assessment's gonna be around six-million-six.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two and some short change. We subtract the six-million-six-hundred-and-eleven in short change, and that's how we get to the seventy-one thousand and two, three hundred bucks. We've tested that number with the school district. They agreed at the time, but I'd want to see the formal paper in front of us.
Yeah, that is what they said at the meeting.
Well, they voted a budget, and they gave that number, but until I see it.
Yeah, they did give the assessment numbers at the end of the meeting.
I, I, I'm just waiting for the.
Geister, yeah, I, I, I get it. Paper, I get it.
Yeah, I know. Until we get it out from the treasurer, it's not official.
It's all, yeah, hallucinations.
We're in decent shape.
I will check Monday.
Thank you for that, by the way. We're in decent shape.
Hope you're able to attend.
Thank you for that, by the way, in case you didn't hear me, that we're in decent shape. It was really good of, you know, the administration and the Board of Selectmen to plan for this.
Yes.
It was really good, rather than coming at it from the back end, you know?
Yep.
Um, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer.
Definitely.
Just wanna let you know.
All right, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Fall Town Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.